To the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. As we begin this evening for the chair's report, I wanted to explain why lifting the mask mandate on the school bus did not require a school committee vote. On August 18th, 2021, we voted a mask mandate in all school buildings prior to the order of the Commissioner of Education. When he lifted, the Commissioner lifted the mask mandate in schools on February 28th, our order would have still been in place. We needed to vote to lift it, which we did on February 16th. The mask order on school buses had been placed into effect by the CDC prior to the 2021 school year. We never voted it in as it was out of our hands. Therefore, when the CDC lifted the mandate last Friday, we didn't have to vote in order to lift the mandate. We do have the ability to put a mask mandate in place locally on the bus. If we chose to do that, we will discuss that and vote on it later this evening. Now it is time for public comment. I just want to remind the public that the first public comments section is for agenda items only. The second public comments section is open to any topic within the scope of authority of the school committee. Public comments about individual students are prohibited to protect the privacy of the student per state and federal law. Do we have any public comments? If you wish to comment and you are Zooming, you can raise your hand. And I'm not seeing anyone?
No.
Okay, then we will continue. Next, to review and approve minutes, we're looking at the regular session minutes from February 16th, 2022. Does anyone have any questions on those minutes? Seeing none, does anyone have a motion to approve them?
I will make a motion to approve the minutes from the February 16th meeting.
I'll second that motion.
All right then. All in favor?
You might have to do a roll call vote though.
Oh, sorry Sophie, we have to do a roll call vote? So, roll call vote then? Thank you for that.
Ms. Shapiro?
Yes.
Mr. Schoolenbrini?
Yes.
Mrs. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Leighton?
Yes.
Mrs. Oshambo?
Yes. Thank you. Now we have a line item transfer. Mr. Cassidy?
Good evening, everyone. Mike Cassidy, business manager. In front of you tonight is a transfer from Turkey Hill Elementary School. It's a $942.97 transfer from the computer contracted services to the supply, excuse me, yeah, that's correct, computer contracted services to science supply line item. They fell short on their calculation on some of their purchases and this transfer allow to complement some of the purchases that they've already made.
All righty. Any questions for Mr. Cassidy? Then can I have a motion to approve the line item transfer?
I'll make a motion to approve the line item transfer of $942.97 as outlined.
I'll second that.
All right then, a roll call vote?
Ms. Shapiro?
Yes.
Mr. Schoolenbrini?
Yes.
Mrs. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Leighton?
Yes.
Mrs. Oshambo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And now it is time for the superintendent's report.
Good evening, everyone. I have some updated COVID information for you this evening. The Lunenburg positivity rate as of February 28th is at 2.91%, which is great news. The Massachusetts positivity rate as of today is 1.89%. District weekly case numbers as of today, we have three cases. And the vaccination rate, primary school is at 46%, Turkey Hill is at 55%, middle school 63%, and the high school at 73%. So you see a little bit of an increase in our lower grades there. School visits were made this week, over these last three days. Our building administrators, our health and safety officer, and I visited classrooms in all buildings over these last three days. Students are smiling and students choosing to mask report that all is going well with their choice. Our nurses and behavioral health staff report that there have been only a few students who have experienced some anxiety on the first day of school, returning with everyone without masks. However, the reports are for day two and day three that has settled in and kids seem to be doing well. Staff seemed happy, students seemed happy. I was very happy. It's odd. I expected to see what I saw, but I didn't expect to feel what I felt. The smiles are contagious and for four hours walking around classrooms in all of our school buildings, my face started to hurt because I smiled the whole time and it was just so uplifting to see everybody just so happy and to see something akin to what used to be the normal version of school. So I really was quite happy. And some reminders for our families, March 16th is our next school committee meeting. That will also be our FY23 budget hearing that evening at the meeting. And on March 17th, the FY23 budget presentation will be provided to the finance committee at their regular meeting. And that's all I have for you this evening.
Thank you very much. And now to our student representative, Sean Delaney.
Thank you. I'll start with the high school. Students are very excited for the new status on the mask mandate. Competitive class plays were held on February 16th and 17th with senior class 22 winning. Students are beginning to select their courses for next year. Prom Committee has made great progress with planning the prom. Ticket sales will begin on March 7th and will end on the 25th. The Lunenburg Student Council will be participating in polar plunge on March 16th. And the middle school, the girls indoor track team and the girls basketball team were both Midland Wachusett Sea League champions. The first all-school band rehearsal happened after February break and on March 3rd. The Lunenburg Girl Scouts are working on collecting plastic to recycle with bins located around the middle school. And last is Turkey Hill. The school-wide spelling bee was held Thursday, February 10th. The overall winner was Chloe McKenna from 5th grade and the runner-up was Anna Pasetti.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next order of business is the budget update.
Let me invite Mr. Cassidy up.
This feels new. With remote, I have the screen in front of me and I have all the numbers in front of me. So it's, it's the new, the old normal is now the new.
Is the new normal, yes.
Just a brief budget update. There's really not a lot to report as far as the Q&amp;A discussion. The last budget that was presented on 216 is the one that will be up for question and answers this evening. There really hasn't been that much changes. We'll be talking about the transportation bid that is up for award this evening and it's right on line with what was budgeted, a few thousand dollars off. So we'll make that adjustment for the final budget in two weeks. So be prepared for that. Mr. Leighton requested some information about, and I just want to, what's the, you're looking for a difference between the increase in chapter 70 funds and what was not funded by, in the local budget with the 3.1% increase? So I've heard people talk about, well, we got an 11% increase from the state, but that's not an 11% increase in the entire budget. The local, that the chapter 70 money is from year to year, it's right around 36% to 37%. So it's an 11% on the 37% of the budget. And I'm not, I'm not trying to confuse anybody here, but it's just a percentage of a percentage. So just to be clear. Now with the proposed 3.11% increase, there is a gap between, still left on the table, and I think that money would probably go back to the town to support some of the other maintenance of effort work that they do for us. And I calculated that to be about $220,000. And that's the difference right now. You know, the, we didn't get an 11% over the last couple of years. We didn't even get 2% or 2.5%. So there is some catch-up with the local budget or the local portion of the budget. So this, I mentioned that 36%, 36%, 37% has been supported by chapter 70 funds. Next year, if it rolls out as a 3.1%, that'll go up to 39% and the town will contribute 61% to the proposed budget. Lot of numbers, a lot of percentages. I hope I was clear, but, so the big thing is that, yeah, there is some money left on the table. The 11% is not 11% of the total budget. It's a portion of the budget that is supported by the state. So hopefully I cleared some of that information up for the school committee and the public as well.
Yes, thank you.
Follow-up question on that. The Monty Tech budget came in like $180,000 more than expected. The chapter 70 funds, would that be used for that as well?
That's probably more of a question for the town manager in addressing the larger budget.
So when they do chapter 70 funds, and I should know this after watching two presentations on it, but it does make your head spin. The chapter 70 funds, when it comes to the town of Lunenburg, is it supposed to support Monty Tech as well? Or does it just come to the town and the town decides how it supports education?
Well, the foundation budget includes all money that goes to education, so it does include Monty Tech as well. So at the end of the day, the town manager or the town will be looking at supporting all educational initiatives. If we had a charter school, we'd be looking at that as well. So with Monty Tech's increase, then the town would have to increase their contribution as well. So some of that, that chapter 70 money could be used for Monty Tech and supporting their increases as well.
Yeah, yeah, I get it. It's confusing, but I get it. Mr. Schoolenbrini?
So my understanding is that anything over a 2.5% increase has to be approved by a vote in the town. And so if the budget for the school district comes in over that threshold, is the money from chapter 70 increases enough to cover the gap?
I think that, I've never heard that.
Okay.
But, and I think this is proposition two and a half, which is, I think it's raising the taxes.
Yeah.
I think that that's maybe something that you're referring to. I don't know the exact percentage that it's increasing, but it's an overall above and beyond the 2.5%. So I don't think it's applicable in this case.
Right. Right. They take 2.5% of the property tax and then the town manager has that much to work with.
Okay.
That's, that's what it comes out to basically. So if somebody gets a 5% increase in their budget, that means somebody else ended up with less for some reason.
Got it.
It's a balancing act the town manager has to do.
Yeah.
A tough job, for sure.
But we have gotten, or received, 2.5% over the last few years. And I know that the town manager is committed to 2.5 in the upcoming years as well.
Okay.
Just based upon some of our talks around negotiations. So they're in, they're in for supporting education, so.
Are there any other questions from the committee on the budget? Are there any questions from the public on the budget? Because this is a Q&amp;A time for the public dealing with the budget. If you are off in Zoom, you can raise your hand. Someone's on a phone, you can't raise your hand on a phone. So you can sing out if you have a question on the budget. I'm guessing there's no questions.
I'm not seeing any raised hands.
All right.
So there was no action by the school committee this evening?
Right.
Except for question and answers. I just want to reiterate what the superintendent mentioned is that two weeks from tonight will be the final proposed superintendent budget for FY23. Final changes will be made to that budget with a narrative in a presentation. And then we'll probably, we'll likely get that out on our website. And there'll be still an opportunity for public to participate at the beginning of the meeting if they have any questions at that time too.
And they can also email us directly. We can also answer questions.
All right.
Okay.
No other questions, then we'll move on. The transportation bid.
The transportation, it's, this might be the last time we talk about transportation.
You'd think.
So the Lunenburg Public Schools had a bid opening on February 17th for their transportation services. And this is general transportation services for the next three years. We released an invitation for bid, which was approved by the school committee at the beginning of January. It was advertised in goods and services, con buys, local newspapers, posted internally in the building. These are all requirements of bidding and that's why I just want to say that publicly. We had eight transportation companies request our invitation for bid, but only one submitted a formal bid, and that was D-Bus Services. So this number is alarming, but just be aware what, I'll break that down for you as well. So the total three-year contract is $5,22,675. So they're, I mean, it's a significant increase of 20.26% over the last three-year contract. However, what is skewing some of the increases are transportation for field trips, athletic events, and vans. And those are only estimates based upon what we have done in the past. The real number that impacts the local budget is a 13.3% increase over the next three years. And if I may, the general ed transportation line item will increase 5.15% next year. In FY24, a 3.67%. And then in FY25, a 4.72% increase. Those amounts will be in the local budget. Those will be in, be supported by the town manager. It'll go to town meeting. Generally speaking, the field trips for athletic events, band competitions, those are for the most part supported by revolving accounts, either student activity accounts, athletic activity accounts. There's a very small portion of transportation that is applied to the athletic budget as well. We have never reached the amounts that are projected. However, we put those projections in anticipating that every, will be going to every single event all the time. And it never comes to fruition, but we bet it the same, as we would the general education bid, number of buses, number of students that are being transported. So the, just getting back to the transportation of field trips, athletic events and vans, it's projected at 6,500 miles of bus use during a year. And those increases are more significant. FY23, it's 5.2%, 5.24% increase, a 9.6% increase in FY24, and a 9.21% increase in FY25. I don't have a clear explanation on why some of these increases. I think it's important to note that D-Bus does regularly purchase new equipment. And it, the costs of school buses have gone up. In addition, they're a little bit, they've become less accessible to purchase in a timely fashion. So I'm sure that some of those, the costs are associated with that. And if you recall, D-Bus and any bus company is complaining about the number of, the trouble they're finding bus drivers. So I would anticipate that they're increasing rates to recruit. The percentages for the general education transportation are somewhat in line with what other districts are getting on their bids. I pointed out to the chair, year one is a little bit higher than some of the other districts I've seen, but then we align pretty closely. And our bid is a little bit different than some of the other districts, but, I mean, it's my opinion that those amounts for the other transportation services are a little, little high. So that'll force us to not get to those caps and plan more wise as we plan our trips. So that is what is in front of the school committee tonight is to moving forward on initiating a town contract for this amount. I can tell you that the year one, the $809,100 is well within our budget and something that we had planned for.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Cassidy. Does anyone have any questions? Mr. Leighton?
Thank you. Thank you for the information. I did have a question. I was surprised that eight transportation vendors requested the IFB, but there was only one that came back.
Yeah.
I don't have a lot of experience with that. The only experience I do have was working with the TCP Building Design Committee. We requested architects and we ended up getting three bids back and were able to have interviews. And we had discussed whether we, if we were going to have enough, do we send out the bid again? And I'm wondering if that would even be an option with our timeline and would it even make sense?
I mean, the timeline, we could certainly rebid it. I don't know if we're going to get any additional bidders. It's more territorial. They did meet all the requirements for the bid, so it's very difficult to throw out the bid if I follow the rules and they follow the rules. I was optimistic with the eight. There were a couple new transportation companies that I had never seen before. In fact, one of them showed up at the bid opening just to get to know some of the players and was interested in the final amount. They also had a couple other, of the, two of the other eight vendors asked us to get copies of the formal bid. So I think, you know, this is a tight-knit business community. I think it's a good price. I, like I said, it would be hard to throw out the bid right now when everyone is sort of, if it was sky-high and it was way out of our budget, certainly we could, we could eliminate that, eliminate the bid and rebid it. We're kind of cornered with something that, if they had come in with like a 9% or 10%, I would, I'd probably be encouraging you to rebid at this point.
That makes sense.
I think it's reasonable. Like I said, I remain optimistic that it will become more competitive. You know, it's north-reading transportation for a student. The regulars got, requested the bids, which was good to see, but there were a couple of new faces that I think are looking, and the gentleman that showed up for the bid opening kind of disclosed that we're looking to expand in Massachusetts. So in that, he didn't explain what his expansion plan was, but if he's going to all the bids, he's probably, he's likely planning and gathering a business plan to venture out. And he was in, close to, like Taunton, that area, like southern, southeastern Massachusetts, but not, not on the Cape, but kind of in that corridor of Massachusetts. So they were looking to expand up the 495 area. So, and that's kind of where we're at. And I think, I think that might be part of their business plan. And it keeps, multiple bidders keeps the bidding process honest. And I'm not, I'm not saying this is a dishonest bid, but it really sharp, when people have to sharpen their pencils, the only benefit is to the town or cities and the savings. So.
Thank you.
All right. If there are no other questions, then do we have a motion to accept the transportation bid?
I'll make a motion to accept the school bus transportation bid presented by Mr. Cassidy.
I'll second that motion.
A roll call vote, please.
Ms. Shapiro?
Yes.
Mr. Schoolenbrini?
Yes.
Mrs. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Leighton?
Yes.
Mrs. Oshambo?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone.
All right, thank you. Now we have an update of the CDC guidance.
So earlier this evening during the chair's report, we sort of broached this topic for this evening. So late Friday last week, the CDC announced that effective February 25th, 2022, that it's no longer requiring that masks be worn on school buses or vans for K-12 students and children in childcare programs. Schools and districts may decide whether to lift or maintain local mask requirements on buses or vans. And they also suggest that individuals who wish to continue masking in a mask optional setting be supported in that choice. So as the chair outlined earlier, we never put in a mask requirement for the buses. So therefore, we didn't have to vote to lift a requirement for masking on buses. However, now that it is lifted, you certainly could have discussion and consider whether or not you wanted to reinstate a mask requirement on buses or leave it where we are right now, where D-Bus felt that the mask optional was what they were prepared to move forward with. And I just want to frame this, that the federal order actually was put upon the transportation companies. So I did have a conversation with D-Bus over this past weekend once we got clarification and confirmation that in fact, this was effective immediately. And the owner of the company told me that they were quite happy to move forward with an optional model. So students can continue to wear masks, drivers can continue to wear masks, but it's not going to be required. So right now- So right now, that's where we are in a mask optional model. But certainly, as I said, you could have discussion and decide that you wish to restore a full mandate for all to mask on the bus, but that would be up to you.
So is there any discussion from the committee on doing that? Ms. Shapiro, I see your hand.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm wondering, since we're going to be going over the COVID stats in schools at our next meeting anyway, just to kind of evaluate how the new mask stats is going, should we maybe evaluate this at the same time and see like if cases are ticking up, maybe we can think about putting something in on the bus, but figure if the kids aren't wearing the masks in school anyway at this point, we can try it on the bus for a little bit and see how it goes.
So then what you're suggesting, Ms. Shapiro, is that we table this for the next meeting and that we just throw it in with the conversation that we're going to have anyways?
Yeah, I think that would make sense since we can then consider it all at once, once we have a little bit more time to evaluate this based on, if that makes sense?
I don't have a problem with that. Is there any other comment from the committee about waiting?
I guess I would like to have the discussion now just to have, I guess, some ideas out. My initial thought was that having the mask optional policy for the bus would be consistent with what we had passed. So I didn't see any concern of, say, adding a bus policy, mask policy, because there was no need, because it was consistent with our optional masking. And I feel like it's similar where you're, if you're in a situation where you're in a class, on a bus is very similar area-wise. I think also with the spring too, the bus drivers are likely to open windows, crack windows, and get even more air circulation. I did want to discuss too about the updated CDC guidance because there wasn't a change in the nursing requirement. I thought we could be proactive in that as a potential to make a policy that potentially could require masks in the nurse's office in case the CDC does take away that policy, that we could be proactive. But I also would want to hear from the nurses on that, that if they would want that policy initiated before, say, the CDC does remove that policy. So similar to what Sophie said, I would want to hear from the nurses at our next meeting in regards to that aspect of it. But for the buses, I didn't have any concerns.
I'm gonna, you just restate what Brian said, that I think that we have to maintain consistency. And I just don't see why we would make a policy for masks on a bus when they're optional in the schools. Like you said, the kids are, it's the same area, they're all sitting around each other. The other thing, I had a question about, I know this came up on social media, kids have to wear their masks in the nurse's office. Some kids are forgetting to bring masks with them to school if they have to go to the nurse's office. There's masks there, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Just wanted to clarify that because I know some parents were concerned, they can't get to the nurse and we have masks. Okay, good. But yeah, I'm, I just think maintaining consistency, we'll see what happens next weekend, or next week, or two weeks at the next meeting. But there's no reason to make a separate policy for the bus.
Any thoughts?
I have nothing to add.
Nothing to add. So it is the wish of the committee then to wait. And I know, Mr. Leighton, do you want to, you expressed some feeling that you wanted to have the discussion now, but do you want to vote on something now or do you just want to?
No, I think it was just good to have the discussion, but we can table the action until our next meeting.
Yeah, I feel the same way, that it's going mask optional in the classroom, it's the same kids, you have the same population, it doesn't make sense to me to put masks on the bus. But with Ms. Shapiro's comment that we're going to look at this all again in two weeks anyways, so.
Correct. And I think, you know, my notes here for that agenda item at the 16th meeting, we'll make sure that we have information and feedback and input and recommendations from nurses, the bus, even from the administration and from the teachers as well, along with our COVID safety protocol team.
All right.
Lots of feedback for you to consider in two weeks.
And of course, any parents that are interested in giving us feedback, emailing us usually is the best way, but there will be open comment at that meeting as well, public comment. Okay. Then we'll go on to roles and responsibilities of school committees, part three. So this is the end of it. I sent it out and then Brian found a grammatical error. So I corrected it and I don't know that I have to read it, but I assume everybody had a chance to take a look at it. Does anybody have any comments or any thoughts of something that I left out? No. Ms. Shapiro? Nope. Okay. Then I'd like to have a motion that this is accepted so I can contact Public Access so we can tape it.
I'll make a motion. Make a motion to approve the roles and responsibilities of the school committee, part three.
I'll second that motion.
All right, then a roll call vote, please.
Ms. Shapiro?
Yes.
Mr. Schoenbrini?
Yes.
Mrs. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Leighton?
Yes.
Mrs. Archambeau?
Yes.
All right, thank you very much. Next, we have the first reading for the policy 1202 facilities. I know that generally we waive it. This particular policy, we have read at the first reading each time, so I would think we should.
Okay, I will, I have a second, make a break in here. I will make a motion to waive the first reading of policy 1202 facilities.
I'll second.
I would ask if there's any discussion on this policy because we've discussed it quite a bit.
So the only question I had was the numbering, if that's going to get, right now it's four, five is eliminated, then it goes to six. I just want to make sure that six becomes five and seven becomes six and so on.
That will all be adjusted.
Okay.
I would just like to point out what the, I believe, the major change is, is that under priorities, first, Lunenburg School Activities, then second, Lunenburg Community School Programs and Activities, third, Lunenburg School Support Groups like the PTO, fourth, Lunenburg Town Related and Lunenburg Youth Sport Organizations. That is the way the policy initially read, and we put it back to that. Were there any other major changes since the last time we read it aloud?
No. Were we going to put in a bullet point under that?
So we can. So there was public comment at the policy subcommittee meeting and, you know, the potential for further articulating the, what happens under certain circumstances if they are listed as equal priority in the priority list. Generally speaking, operationally, how this works is, the only time that that's going to be an issue is if the two different entities on the same line, let's say the town rec department and let's say LISA, are looking to use the same space at the same time and their requests come in at the same time, which honestly, really doesn't ever happen. I think, you know, the way this is going to operate is that folks are going to submit their requests for reserving the facility for a certain date and time. And as long as the facility is available, they get booked in. And then we really, really don't bump people from their reservation unless of course, it's a school, a couple of years ago, our spring season was very, very, very rainy and we had many, many, many canceled softball games and baseball games, which had to be rescheduled. We also would have had lacrosse games played on our fields that would have had to be rescheduled. That's when we would be contacting the youth groups who might have the field reserved on a Saturday or an evening for practice and saying, we need to reschedule a rained-out game and we might bump them from their practice or their regular scheduled Saturday schedule. When that happens though, we typically try to find an alternate makeup opportunity to get them access to the field. The, I mean, the likelihood that these two entities would submit exactly the same day and time and request for the same facility for the same time and date is highly, highly unlikely to actually ever occur. However, if you felt that it's important to make a determination as to, should that ever happen, to whom then goes the priority? To the town or to the local youth group? So if you wanted to add some sort of qualifying statement, we certainly, we certainly can do that, but I can tell you that the likelihood in practical terms is that that's not very likely to happen. Typically, as an example, our youth organizations submit their schedule months in advance of their season. So far anyway, our experience with the rec department is that as they're nearing an event that they are looking to set up, they'll reach out to schedule. So it's not that they're scheduling months and months in advance. And if something's already booked, it's already booked, you know? So I don't know how you feel about, you know, how you want to quantify should that very unlikely scenario actually occur, you know? Do you want to designate that there's a default priority given to one over the other?
Mr. Leighton?
In my opinion, I don't think the language is needed. I think there's going to be bumps all the time as I participate in the Lunenburg Volleyball Recreational Program and we got bumped because there was a snow day and the basketball team needed to play Thursday night. So it was like, we understood, it made sense. It was disappointing, but it makes sense and you have to get bumped and it happens. It's going to happen on athletic events especially. And I wouldn't, I wouldn't have a concern. I think it's just the directors, the superintendent gets involved and has those conversations, or it's the athletic director getting involved too and having those conversations.
Yeah, I think that that's the key, really.
Just making sure, Ms. Menard's not on here, right? I was trying to see, and to give her the opportunity to speak, but.
I don't see her, but I did let her know that this was coming up on this evening's agenda.
Yeah. Ms. Menard had raised some concerns, that she just wanted to make sure there was a consistency of priority from us, as the parks and recs have a priority list too, and they wanted us to maintain like the same working relationship with the same equal priority lists, I guess. That was what her main concern was, was to changing the language a little bit.
And then once this, this has to be read again, so it's not like it's a done deal. It has to be read again in two weeks and then read again a month from now. And so there is time for public comment on this policy. And if the public feels that that's a necessary thing to add in.
We can.
I don't think it is, but, but, you know, that's my opinion. If the public feels this is necessary to add in. Once this policy is set up, then it is my understanding, we're going to work with the recreation department and set up, and I imagine any other team, you know, that we work with, and set up the, how do you book the field? Where does it go? Who has to approve it? Because there was communication problems. And that is, to me, the more major piece of this whole thing is to make sure we take care of the communication problem.
And there's a, there's an entity missing from the conversation thus far in that the parks commission has regulation over the rental and scheduling of the parks. The schools have regulation over the school facilities, but there are also town facilities, TCP as an example. To whom do you make that request and who has the authority to grant the permission? What's the process and so on? So I do think, separate from this policy, to have folks representing all of the spaces that could be available for rent, parks, town, and schools, come together and create some sort of a brochure outline that can be posted on our website, the town website, so that folks who are interested in renting a space, and maybe we identify what spaces fall under which governing body, so that folks know what's available to rent and to whom they have to make that request. So I do think it's smart to outline all of that for, you know, ease of communication. And we can always, you know, sort of make that qualifier in those documents as well, rather than necessarily, you know, having to include it in policy per se.
Okay. All right. So did we, did we vote on waiving the first?
We didn't vote.
No. So we have to vote on waiving the first read of the policy then?
All right.
If we're all satisfied to do so?
Okay. Ms. Shapiro?
Yes.
Mr. Schoenbrini?
Yes.
Mrs. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Leighton?
Yes.
And Mrs. Archambeau?
Yes.
Okay. So now we have an addendum to the program of studies.
And Mr. Santri is joining us remotely this evening. Hello, Mr. Santri.
Hello, good evening, everyone. Tim Santri, principal Lunenburg Middle School, interim principal Lunenburg High School. Thank you for having me here tonight. First, I think I owe you an apology for presenting an addendum to a program of studies I presented 14 days ago. But that should signal the importance of this class to some students at Lunenburg High School. So myself, Annika Scott, our curriculum director, Jen Miller, our department head for mathematics, and a representative from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education have been working together in order to ensure compliance and rigorous standards for our Algebra II Essentials course, which I am presenting tonight. It's the third course in a sequential program structured to meet the basic requirements for college entrance, designed to meet the common course standards in Algebra II, continues to build on Algebra I concepts. What's an important piece is this is an alternative to our traditional Algebra II class at the high school, which poses sometimes extreme difficulty for certain students and then actually sometimes becomes a roadblock to graduation. I've been working with my department heads and with Jen Miller, our math department head, putting our heads together, trying to figure out an alternative path for some of those students. This would be for 11th graders after Algebra I A and I B was completed. It would also come with teacher recommendation. I really hope you're able to approve it tonight and it becomes an option for our students during this registration period, which begins, I believe, within a couple of weeks. So I'm asking for your support in this class, in this addendum for program of studies. I'll answer any questions that I possibly can. Any technical pieces around the components of the math class, I would defer to Ms. Miller and I would be able to get back to you with answers on that.
Thank you, Mr. Santri. Does anyone have any questions about this course? I would just say, I think it sounds like a wonderful thing. I know it's been a topic of conversation that's been brought up several times over my time on the committee, so I thank you for figuring it out.
Oh, you're welcome. You know, when Ms. Shapiro brought it up at the end of our last meeting, I was like, yes, this is exactly what we've been talking about and trying to develop, just wasn't quite ready for that meeting, but we're ready now.
Great. So do I have a motion to approve the Algebra II Essentials course?
I'll make a motion to approve the addendum to the program of studies.
The second?
I'll second.
And then a roll call vote, please.
Ms. Shapiro?
Yes.
Mr. Schoenbrini?
Yes.
Mrs. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Leighton?
Yes.
And Mrs. Archambeau?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Santri.
Thank you very much.
Okay, now, moving on to new business, we have Mrs. York and a initial approval of student trip to Italy and Greece.
Hi, I'm Tammy York. I'm the Latin teacher at the middle high school. And I'm here tonight to ask for initial approval for a trip over April vacation of 2023, April 11 through 20, and so technically leaving on the Thursday night before vacation, which is often what we'll do. The trip is to Greece and Rome with an overnight ferry between the two countries in the middle of the trip. It would be open to all students in grades nine through 12. And so I'm looking for, I think I sent you all the information that you need, so I won't go through the whole details. But I'm looking for initial approval tonight so that I can move forward with an interest meeting for parents and students.
So if we approve, do we get to go? This looks amazing. This is great itinerary.
Yeah, we're ready to travel again.
Yes, yes. It's such a great opportunity for the kids.
Any any questions for Mrs. York? Mr. Leighton?
What are the the protocols in case it could get sick prior to this?
Yeah, so you know, working with ACIS is the company and they've put together a whole a whole workaround with this. And they've got all kinds of different levels of insurance for the trips that the students can purchase ahead of time. I don't know all the details on it. I think some of it's in the packet that you received. But the company will will go through all of that with the parents. And so there's different levels, like right up to the day before. You know, obviously, if you're sick and you can't go, there's ways that you get all your money back. As of right now, I mean, this is 13 months away, but as of right now, both countries are requiring testing, you know, in order to go. So if that's still in place, of course, they'd have to test. And yeah, there's ways that they can they can get most, if not all, of their money back if they're not able to to travel.
Thank you.
And if the company finds it's not safe to go in that neck of the woods at that point in time, who knows?
Right.
Once you say, you know, you're 14 months out, what happens then?
Right. So the same thing. They've got, if if the company decides that, there's there's definitely ways to get money back. If it was something that, you know, the school committee decided there was a there was a reason that we couldn't go, I could talk to them, you know, well in advance before we would do final approval so that we'd know, you know, what the situation was as far as how much money can be returned to the students and families for paying. But they're they've got all kinds of programs in place for that. I know that.
Anything else?
I just want to say this this is amazing. So thank you for doing this.
I enjoy it. It's been a while since I've got to go, so so I'm hopeful.
Yes. It looks like a wonderful trip. Actually, it's quite similar to one it took a few years ago.
Yeah. Any other questions?
No, I don't see any questions. So do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the student trip to Italy and Greece, 2023.
I'll second.
All right, then. A roll call vote?
Ms. Shapiro?
Yes.
Mr. Scuombrini?
Yes.
Mrs. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Leighton?
Yes.
And Mrs. Archambeau?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Good luck. And now the PTO use of the Blue Knights logo.
So we have somebody from our PTO here this evening? Yes?
Yes.
Come on up.
Hello. Yep. So as what was sent, the PTO is looking for a new way for fundraising. And one idea we thought of was using the Lunenburg Blue Knights logo in a sticker form. And we were thinking, you know, maybe students would be interested in purchasing them. We know there's a lot of already current Blue Knights or sports specific apparel or whatnot, but we haven't thus far seen the sticker. We thought it would be a safe way to, you know, something new to try out. So we were seeking approval for use of the official Blue Knights logo to have the sticker made and then sell.
Okay. Any questions? Mr. Leighton?
Thank you for all that you do with the the PTO. I did have a question of your timeline. Is there a specific window that you want to be selling the stickers or is it a long term plan?
This is the second step in the plan. The first one was just having the mockup made just so we had a visual of it. And then this was our next step to see if it was even an option. So no, we don't have a specific timeline, obviously. You know, we'll just keep going and as soon as they're ready, they're ready. We're hoping to have a spring more of like a community event. And so something like that would be a great time to have it, you know, because we'd have a physical place to sell them. But no, we don't have a timeline already.
Anything else?
Thank you.
No. All right, then. Could I have a motion to approve the PTO using the Blue Knights logo on a sticker?
I'll make a motion to approve the PTO use of the Blue Knights logo.
I'll second that.
And a roll call vote, please.
Ms. Shapiro?
Yes.
Mr. Scuombrini?
Yes.
Mrs. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Leighton?
Yes.
And Mrs. Archambeau?
Yes. All right. Thank you. Now we have a discussion item. Professional learning community presentation.
So this evening. Let's see. Interesting. I'm not sure whose screen that is. If that's the PAC screen that's being displayed on the monitor in the back of the room?
I don't know. It's been confusing me the last couple of minutes.
Yes.
Just wondering what Melinda Gates is doing.
There we go. All right. So all those faces that you see on the screen this evening are the members of our instructional leadership team. I thought it was a good time for you to meet the team and hear from the team as an instructional leadership team, rather than as individual principals with different types of presentations before you, so that you could get a sense of who we are as a a group and the work that we have been undertaking for the last several years, but an even stronger sense of the work that we're doing this year. So I'll ask you to unmute as I call your names so you could say hello to the viewers at home and the members of the school committee. So this evening, we have Mr. Santri. He's the principal of both the middle and the high school this year. Mr. Santri?
Hello.
Mr. Rob McGrath is the assistant principal at the middle school.
Good evening, everyone.
Mr. Duffy, an assistant principal at the high school.
Good evening, everybody.
Mr. David Maiku is the other assistant principal at the high school.
Hey, everyone.
Mrs. Heidi Champagne, the principal at Turkey Hill Elementary School.
Hello.
Mr. John Palumbo is the assistant principal at Turkey Hill Elementary School.
Everyone.
Mr. Adams is the principal of the primary school.
Good evening.
Mr. Kevin White is the assistant principal of the primary school.
Hey, everyone.
We also have Annika Scott, our director of teaching and learning.
Good evening.
We have Deirdre McLean with us as well. She is our Title I Coordinator slash Reading Specialist.
Hello.
We also have Juliana Hanscom, who is our Director of Special Services. And I thank I thank God, everybody. So this team, we meet weekly every Wednesday afternoon. And we really focus our our attention to all things related to instruction, improving instruction. And we have many new members to this team this year because, as you know, this year we switched the model temporarily as an interim solution. At the high school, we have one principal and three assistant principals. And for the first time now, we have a dedicated assistant principal at the Turkey Hill and a full time dedicated assistant principal at the primary school. Previously, we had shared positions. So this this alone has been, you know, a shift. And I have to say, as the the captain of this fine team of instructional leaders, it it really has been a fantastic experience this year. The new members to this team bring an awful lot to the table. So I am I'm going to turn it over to them so that they can give you a bit of an overview of of the different things that we've been working on as a team this year. And you'll have an opportunity to hear from all of them as we move through the slides. And you'll also have a a chance to ask questions. We can certainly wait till the end, but if if you have something that's, you know, particularly relevant to something that somebody has just said, you can certainly jump in at that point as well. All right. So Mr. Cassidy, do we know if we're prepared to share the screen through the through the booth? Okay. So I'll turn it over to to PAC to screen share.
Okay, it looks like it's up. So I'm going to start us off this evening. First of all, as you know, I'm Heidi Champagne, principal of the elementary school. Excited to be here this evening. And I'm just one of 12 members of our professional learning community. We're here tonight to provide the most engaging part of your school committee meeting because, in part, the superintendent has tasked us with giving you a little flavor of who we who we are, how we work together, what our dynamics are, how it's been this year for all of us. So she asked us specifically not to be scripted, which is harder for some of us than others. But we're going to give it a go and sort of talk to you about several different areas in all of our schools. All right. Annika?
So it looks like we're starting with learning walks. And this, I can, I'm sure I speak for the group when I say that this is one of all of our favorite parts of our job. What we've been doing is throughout the course of the year, our whole team gets together and visits four classrooms in a given building. We we separate into groups of usually three administrators traveling through the classrooms. We spend just about 10 minutes in each class and then we come together as a group afterwards to debrief. When we're in the rooms, we're looking for active student engagement. We're we're talking about instructional strategies that we noticed, social emotional learning and the general classroom environment. Debriefing afterwards allows us to calibrate on our own observations. Connecting those, you know, not only to evaluations, but to where we feel, you know, we're strong in terms of instruction and student learning and where we need some fine tuning. But these are genuinely some of our favorite visits as we do these learning walks. And we're making our way through each of the buildings throughout the course of the year. The other form of classroom visits that we participate in as a group of administrators are called instructional rounds, or we we call them sweeps. So myself and the principals, the assistant principals and the literacy specialist or math specialist travel to a one particular building. And we see one content area at a time and we we visit across the grade level. So for example, if we're at Turkey Hill, we're going to see all the grade three ELA classrooms, all the grade four and all the grade five in one given day. We're looking there for consistency in grade level instruction and active student engagement, again, always. And then what we do following those visits is we debrief, just using the notice and wonder protocol. So what do we notice in each of the rooms? And what are the things we wonder if we we send feedback out to the teachers and ask them some of the questions that we wonder about? We've been trying to schedule these three times a year in each building for ELA and math. We've also scheduled some additional sweeps and other content areas, for example, across science classrooms, across the unified arts classrooms, and even across the new trails curriculum that we've been piloting this year. So I don't know if anyone else has a comment over those two visits, but they're they're personally some of my favorite days of the year.
Okay. One of the things that I I failed to say right up front is if anyone has a clarifying question or comment to make, please don't hesitate. We can't really see you all on Zoom, but I'm sure you can just unmute and and ask us to clarify. The classroom visits, the idea is that as instructional leaders who now have full time assistant principals, we have this advantage of being real instructional leaders. And so we've talked a lot about how we can up our game in that way, how we can like like the the plaintive evaluation and and how we can best support our staff in that. So we use the the Teach Point, which is a a basic program within for unannounced observations. And that gives us all the basic information or we fill in or check boxes about lesson objectives and strategies and instructional practices and checks for understanding. We also, when we visit classrooms, we look for and we certainly highlight the positive components of social emotional learning that are evident in a classroom. The the things that are perhaps less tangible, like the positive student teacher relationships or the routines and procedures, the community building activities that occur. We we, when we give teachers feedback, we're definitely commenting on that we noticed this, we noted it, and and that we understand that it has a deliberate and positive impact. And finally, though, in thinking about evaluations, right, you think about what's the most important thing that you're doing for a teacher? And hopefully, we believe you're providing the opportunity for reflective feedback. So in that attempt to support teachers in becoming more reflective, we agreed this year that we were going to try to have follow up meetings after we do our classroom visits and sit down with teachers. And instead of giving sort of the traditional, oh, here's some warm feedback and here's some cool feedback and here's a a question, we sort of probe them a little more. If you go to the next slide, Kate, I think it's.
Heidi, I just wanted to add in like that that whole idea of meeting with educators to have these one on one conversations was an idea brought up by Heidi, but but brought up in the instructional leadership team, functioning as that a a true leader that meets every week to reflect with your with your colleagues and develop best practices. That that was one of the wonderful things that has come out of this group too, is the have these ideas and to be able to bounce them off of everyone and then really create what's best as we move forward as a district. So I just wanted to throw that in, Heidi. I'm sorry.
Oh, no, absolutely, right? That idea of of talking to each other and challenging each other a little bit with how can we make the evaluation system more effective and how can we best support teachers with that? So again, on the next slide, it shows you. Did we lose the slide presentation?
Just hang tight. My, for some reason, this happens to me every meeting. At some point, I can no longer advance my slides. Hold tight.
Heidi, do you mind to ad libbing for four to five minutes, please?
Yeah, well. Let me just talk to you about a few of the questions that we ask teachers. So when they come in for our post observation meeting, we ask them about the intention for their lesson and what did they think about it? How did they know the students achieved the objectives? What might they change in order to better achieve the objectives? Oh, looks like it's up now. So you can see the questions yourselves. I'm not going to read them to you. So but I am going to give you a little honest feedback. What I've noticed in our our go around with this is that some teachers, this is a natural fit. This is very they have enough confidence that it feels easy for them to engage in this sort of dialogue. And for some teachers, it's definitely more challenging. We're not looking to say, oh, we got you here. We're looking for you to be honest honestly reflective. And and that can be challenging. But I know for myself, as an evaluator, it's been helpful. And I feel like I've gotten a richer. And I feel like I've gotten a richer understanding of what has occurred in the classroom. And again, other principals, if you want to jump in and talk about your experience with this at all, or move on.
I'm going to tie mine in to when I get to my slide, Heidi.
Okay.
All right, so here we are. Perfect timing. So this is the nuts and bolts of supervision and evaluation. A lot of what Heidi said, that previous slide with those questions, I'd use those with my, particularly this year, with my first-year staff, my non-professional status teachers in our mid-year meetings. With their mentor teacher. Those questions were so effective prior to any observations that I conducted on those first-year non-professional status teachers or second-year non-professional status teachers. It focused, it really focused what we were going to talk about in the meeting outline. We obviously, I mean, we really work on, you know, just like we're going to align the curriculums in the classrooms, we want to align our goals for the district. You know, we revisited the power standards this year for our evaluation system. There were some DESI recommendations this year, we looked at those. And we really focused on trying to align those with what we already had in place for our district strategy for continuous improvement. There is a, I do have the power standards there, there is a link, if you want to click on it, you don't have to, it's fine. But these are the power standards that we felt were the most aligned or the most relevant to what we were doing for our district work. So you have curriculum planning and assessment. You know, obviously with the addition of the K to eight math and ELA coordinators, with the addition of, you know, the Title I coordinator with access to Anika, you know, that well-structured, that tier-one instruction level, we're really focusing on that. And we want to really focus on that. And that is a major part of our discussions. Teaching all students, you'll notice that there's that classroom instruction piece, but the next two really get into that SEL piece, right? Like making an environment for students so that they feel comfortable and allowing them to be who they are as individuals and progress at their own rate to any challenges that they might have. So these two indicators really kind of speak to that. And also being culturally sensitive to the needs of families along the way. The last one is that professional collaboration down at the bottom. And this really can be seen in our, we call it common planning, but it's really a misnomer. And I didn't realize this until about December this year. It really is a POC at this point. You know, we are looking at curriculums, we are looking at aligning our instruction, we're looking at common experiences for students. So all these things will play into the evaluations as we move forward. Having an assistant principal, a full-time assistant principal, and I'm speaking as someone who was split for a number of years, as Heidi can attest to. You know, it allows us to really divvy up the evaluation case load. We can spend more time with individual teachers talking about these things, right? Talking about how can we improve student performance? Or how can we improve opportunities for learning for students? You know, that's been a real positive in the building. It's really provided a lot more time, you know, we joke, right? If you're an educator, you know you have those five-minute conversations in a hallway. Well, now we're having like 30 to 45-minute conversations in an office and we're really digging down deep into what's going on in the classroom for students. And I think it's starting to make a difference. I think it's going to continue to make a difference. You know, and I feel good about the conversations I have, you know? They're in-depth, they're focused, they're targeted. You know, the dialogue is the most important thing, right? You know, that reflection piece, let me help you reflect on what's going on. Help me understand what's going on in your classroom if I have questions. Because we all have questions about sometimes what we see in the classroom during an observation. So these conversations, you know, having the opportunity to have these conversations, I feel has made a real difference in the evaluation supervision piece of my job. You know, we have the mid-year meetings, we piloted that last year. We have mid-year meetings with our non-professional status teachers. We opened it up a little bit to our professional status teachers. To be honest with you, I didn't have a lot of people that could barge into that this year. But again, we have a lot going on too. So as far as new curriculums and some changes for other things. So, and I understand that. But that's, I think we really need to, me looking forward, I really want to push that out to the professional status teachers to have those mid-year conversations, right? Not just a conversation about an observation I did on you or that I completed, but have those mid-year conversations. Where are you? What do you need? What do you need to move forward? You know, what's not working, what is working, you know? Getting those celebrations of success in that classroom, really, really, really like taking that in as an administrator and being able to put that out to the general public and the school committee ultimately too, so.
And Chad, I know from my perspective too, for those mid-year meetings, what I really liked, this was the first year that I tried this, which and we all agreed upon, which has been great, having the ILT for us to be able to really all get on the same page as to what we're doing. So when I met with my non-professional teachers at mid-year, I told them, I said, don't worry about getting the artifacts. We're just going to have a discussion. And that 30 to 45 minutes was so powerful. And not only the fact of hearing what they were doing and then giving me stuff that I might not have seen when I was in the classroom, but also having discussions about, well, how can I get to this end of my goal? What are some ways that I can work on this? Or what are some things that I can do from this? So it wasn't strictly just, oh, let me write down your evaluation. It was really brainstorming with the new teachers as to, you know, this is the way I'd go about it. Or this is the way you might want to go about it. Or hey, have you thought about talking to this person or to that person? It was really, really powerful and I'd love to be able to do it ongoing because I think it showed, I learned so much more from those 30 to 40 minutes than I ever did looking through artifacts. Right, Rob? Like on a weekend, we joked about this before, having the three screens up and you and I are both like dying by the end of the day, looking at 15 different artifacts coming up and down. So I really like this, the new approach we've taken this year.
Yeah. I would agree in being able to separate the, sorry Chad, I didn't mean to jump in, but just having the numbers of the evaluants that we have now versus what we've had in the past, it is so much more manageable and you can have such more of a rich conversation because the amount of staff that we're evaluating is just so much more manageable now because of the administrative help that we have. Sorry, Chad, but.
No, no, I think everybody here can agree. I could talk all day about educational strategies and educational philosophies. And just being able to have a longer amount of time than I've had in the past, you know, that's what I want to do. I want to talk, I want to pick your brain, I want to learn from you, I want to provide you with some alternative ideas. I want to be reflective with you, I want to share, you know, just want to share information. And we haven't always had that opportunity in the past and now we have it. And that's my favorite part of the day, is just sharing, having those conversations, so.
Yep, the other thing too, that I think the process that we've kind of taken on allows is just for like, you know, that trust building. And I think, I can speak for all of us as former teachers, you know, someone comes into your classroom and it's, it can be anxiety-producing, right? It's really personal work. As teachers, we want to be seen as doing great work. And I think now as evaluators, it's really key that we let teachers know that we don't have all the answers and we're here to be helpful. And I think having conversations with teachers about their work can kind of bring down some of that potential anxiety. And so going forward, teachers are more apt to come to us if they're having a hard time, if they feel like we're not there to be critical, but there to be helpful. And I know when I was teaching, with my evaluators, I just wanted to feel that the person evaluating me was someone who could be helpful to me, not someone who's just going to nitpick. So I think we're all committed to that as well, which is really important.
As my counterpart likes to say, we're solution-oriented.
And I just went to input before. I have a different perspective. I'm a new person coming in and I've been in multiple school districts. And I have to say that Lindbergh has truly some of the best teachers and best administrators I have ever seen that are committed to working towards a united goal. My job feels so easy because I came in and the structures are there. All of the new positions that have been provided, mine included, are allowing us to really strengthen the structure and the process of our NTSS, but for not just students, but for teacher support as well. Those learning walks helped me identify truly what PD would be the most beneficial and things that I can do with the teachers as a collaborative group. And it's, it's just, we have some really powerful conversations. And it's not just, oh, we need PD, it is purposeful PD, targeted, purposeful PD, just like what we're trying to do for the students. And so I haven't been in a district where admin practices what they preach. And it's so nice to be in a district where everybody is working towards that united goal. The new positions that you added are making my job great, but it really is helping us to truly have that seamless flow between the tiers and support for anyone in any area, academic, social, emotional, behavioral, to be able to intervene and get it back on track. And so I feel like in the next few years, this is going to be amazing. Truly amazing. But I really, I can't say enough about the teachers and the admin here. So. Yes, go, next slide.
All right, I love to talk about this piece too, because when we talk about leadership, just like we have been, we all think about curriculum instruction and assessment. We talk about evaluations, we talk about trust and building relationships with teachers. And those are all huge things, we all know they are. There's another huge component to leadership and that's management. And that has literally fallen into the laps of our system principals that we've invested in in the district. And during this pandemic and after, that level of management has been overwhelming at times. And our APs have just done an outstanding job of managing a building. You know, sometimes a well-managed building means quiet. And a quiet building sometimes doesn't get the publicity it should. It's because it's well-running and there's really nothing to, you know, talk about. The, you know, through this pandemic and through our safety protocols and our reopening plans, all of that took huge management and continues today. I mean, just management of cafeteria and management of student transitions in the building and mask compliance and working with parents and hallway compliance and how are we going to do our arrivals and what doors are they coming in? And we've got to make sure our sixth graders are not with our ninth graders. And how are we going to have students come into the building? And how are we following up with those students? That, that management piece is, has been done extremely well through this pandemic. I just wanted to thank everyone and all of our APs for that incredibly hard work that sometimes, like I said, with a well-managed building, it goes unsung. And I just wanted to acknowledge that today. Thank you. So as part of our leadership work too, that we have been, you know, charged with this year, our APs have now become our 504 coordinators. And what I like this year, opposed to in years past where we've been spread a little bit thin and we've had to, you know, like, I hate the saying, but wear many hats in the district. So that meant that we multitasked and sometimes didn't do as well a job as we could have because we were managing more things than we possibly could. I think this year that we feel a part of these organizations, that these minor, mini organizations within our schools, being a 504 coordinator, APs are able to put their input into these meetings, schedule them, learn students and what their strengths and weaknesses are and how we can best accommodate them. I can tell you firsthand from being part of both the behavioral health support teams in the middle school and the high school has been enlightening and powerful in making sure that no student falls through the cracks. And that with all of our staff that we've been able to add to our building, we've been able to manage these, you know, crises of behavior health that have come into our building. Same with our student support teams and our department head meetings. You know, I've been new to the high school ever since August when we had our admin team in place. We've been kind of focused on supporting teachers and students. And that has been our guiding light and that's what has been kind of leading us through this whole piece. And not just a piece of a compliance where we're seeing if these groups are happening. We're part of these groups, we are active participants. And I think that's also been very powerful this year.
So for the family engagement piece, I can tell you that we've been doing quite a bit in the district, things that you may or may not have been a part of. So we've still been sending out, surveys have been going out. But because we're part of, we're going through our DESI audit this year, our tier-focused monitoring. Special education parents are going to be sent surveys in April to again, answer some questions for DESI. And they're going to be compiling that and then putting that out probably next year when they report back on how that audit went. We're still doing our climate surveys and we're still communicate, we've got our communication survey for families that's going out this spring as well. Another outreach that we do that you all may not be aware of is our EL department, our English learner department. They meet with families via Zoom and they have scheduled meetings in October, March, and June. They do it midday and they do it at evening to try to accommodate all family schedules. And I can tell you, I've been a part of those meetings. They get the highest percentage rate turnout, I think, out of any family meetings I've been a part of. I wish my, actually this year in November, we had a great turnout for our PAC South meeting, which was amazing. But by far, those EL parents and families and the teachers, they come together and they've developed such good relationships with the families that they really have rich conversations and great dialogue during those family meetings. And like I just mentioned, our Zoom meetings that we have too for PAC South. We'll be having another one in March, March 10. And DESI is actually going to be at that one to talk about the tiered focus monitoring process to explain that better for families too.
Really, and I just, go ahead, Chad.
I'm sorry. I just want to put a plug in here for my social worker, who is also an additional new staff this year, Stephanie Miller. You know, the district worked on doing climate surveys for students, parents, and staff. There really, to my current knowledge and talking with Jamie Miller and Stephanie Miller, my school social worker adjustment counselor, there really wasn't an appropriate or like a climate survey similar to any of the ones that we were able to give to students in all the grades. So she actually developed a survey for each grade level that would give us similar data to what we were receiving from the students in the older grade. So I, you know, I wanted to put that plug in there. I thought that was phenomenal. She and I talked about it, we talked about what it may look like, how to do it. But she put a lot of work into that and did a lot of data collection on that. So we have that data on our student survey as far as climate goes. And the literacy night, I know Deirdre, you're going to jump in, you want to jump in here and I'll just kind of ad-lib as we go?
Sure. I'm very, very excited about, you know, trying to pair up and do like a literacy night in conjunction with the fundraiser with Scholastic and planning like, at first even like maybe a STEM night or combined literacy or sessions. You know, where parents can come in and have different workshops and see different things that are happening in the school so the kids can show off what they're learning and then talk about literacy. And in conjunction with that, at the Turkey Hills, Heidi and I had, and Amy Reboing, the math specialist, are trying to get outreach with Zoom drop-in. And as the word gets out that parents are aware there is a literacy specialist and as we develop our TST, parents are reaching out to say, how can you help me with the development? Or I have a concern. And so. And so it's starting. And I feel like with the masks off, everything just seems so exciting right now that maybe we can really do this. And so look for a lot more family engagement coming.
All right. So for the next few slides, the assistant principal at Turkey Hill, John Palumbo, and I are going to tag team them. I'm Kevin White, the assistant principal at the primary school. You may remember me from last year when I was split between Turkey Hill and primary. I do just want to say how wonderful it is to be in one dedicated spot and really lay down those roots this year and be able to make those connections with staff and students and just kind of be a consistent figure for both of them. I, I loved my time at Turkey Hill last year, getting to know that staff and student population as well. But it just feels good to be in one place all the time. Some of the additional staff that were spoken about earlier in the slideshow, these are, you know, putting some names to those positions. So we have Melissa Orlowsky, who took over as the MTSS interventionist. We have two tutors who work under her, Ally Simons and Amy Grant. Amy Raboyne, I've heard her name mentioned a few times tonight. We have Deidre McLean on with us. Stephanie Miller, who Chad just spoke about, me. And then Grayson Supa, a wonderful addition to our health office to help Nurse Lasky with everything, you know, that goes on on a daily basis with that.
Hi, everybody. I'm John Palumbo, the assistant principal at Turkey Hill. And this is my first year. My daughter went through Turkey Hill a few years ago. And I've just always loved the school. I think it's incredibly well-run. The staff is amazing. The kids are just fantastic. Love spending time with them. So I'm really happy to be here tonight and happy to be, you know, part of the Lindbergh administrative staff. So our additional staff at Turkey Hill, we have the interventionist Erin Giles. We have two tutors, Madeline Feebo and Lisa Gurney. As Kevin mentioned, we have the math coach and literacy specialist. We have our full-time social worker Kathleen Lantin. We have me. And then we have our second full-time nurse, Cheryl Carlson, who's been a great addition as well. Sorry. One of the things that we've been able to do, when I started last July, I knew that the primary school had done some positive behavior intervention and support, or PBIS, a lot of you have probably heard of this. And I'd done it at a previous school, so I talked to Heidi about it and to see if we could kind of have the same language that the primary uses and put together some things so that we could have a set of big behavior expectations throughout the entire school. PBIS has been shown to improve social, emotional, and academic outcomes for all students. And we've seen some positive results from it.
This is just an example of our expected behaviors in the cafeteria, for example. So we have three main categories: be respectful, be responsible, be safe. I won't trouble you with reading all the other pieces underneath it. But we have similar posters or expectations for areas such as the playground and recess, the bus, and hallways. And these are useful for us when we are addressing a behavior, an unexpected behavior. We can refer back to it and kind of remind them of what the expectation is in that given location or situation.
So here you see a graph, discipline referrals by setting. So at Turkey Hill, we're tracking where they're happening because you saw that, that sign, that cafeteria sign that Kevin was just talking about. We have signs for all these areas. So we have hallway, recess, lunchroom, the bus, bathroom, and then assemblies. As you can see right now for Turkey Hill, you know, a troubling area for us is the bus. We have, that's where a lot of our discipline referrals come from.
For, you know, for the primary level, we don't necessarily have any in-school referrals at this time. A lot of, at this level, a lot of situations that come up are handled by redirection, reinforcing and reminding the students of the expected behaviors and just teaching them, you know, we're still teaching them how to be a good friend, a good citizen, a good student, and kind of how to school at this point. So a lot of those pieces are just kind of handled in the moment. And we too, though, are also having, are, we are getting referrals on the bus. A lot of them are, you know, siblings, not knowing that they can't act the way they act at home on the bus. But, you know, those are all handled on an individual basis.
So this is helpful for us because we can kind of see where the issues are arising and then try to put together a response for that. We took a look at discipline at Turkey Hill. We had to go back pre-pandemic because it wasn't really fair to look at what we were doing now and comparing it to last year when we were in like a hybrid model. And it was just a very strange, strange time. But we did this year compared to 2019, 2020. And we've had a 39% decrease in referrals. And, you know, it's been like a really positive thing. We attribute that, you know, to having a full-time social worker. We also have a paraprofessional who works side-by-side with our social worker and BCBA, and they kind of work with kids that need that little extra. And they're very proactive in getting ahead of stuff before they become, become an issue. I think also having a full-time assistant principal is really nice because I'm sure, you know, Heidi did the split way back, Chad and Kevin. And, you know, I think it's hard. You have an issue with a kid on a Monday at Turkey Hill and then you're at a primary for the next two days and you can't check back in with them till Thursday. So there was that gap, you know. And, you know, now if something happens on a Monday, I can be right there checking in with the kid Tuesday morning, making sure that, you know, they're off to a good start for that day. So I think all those things combined has really, you know, helped us kind of minimize the discipline referrals.
So this is just kind of a quick snapshot of what I do. A lot of it's been mentioned already throughout the slides. But kind of, you know, John just hit the nail on the head here. The, the student check-ins and should have added consistent student check-ins is crucial. You know, I have some kids that I check in with every day and it's not necessarily a formal check-in in my office, but just as soon as they come off the bus, I know, you know, I want to check in with them and see how they're doing this morning because they had a rough day the day before. You know, I know something's going on in their life. So just being there consistently for them and being that trusted adult, I think is probably one of the most important pieces of being that dedicated building assistant principal. I've been able to help Chad organize the weekly staff newsletter, the, you know, the operational piece of being at arrival dismissal and lunch, staff attendance, finding and assigning the coverage for staff absences. A big piece that, you know, I've really liked to take on the past year and a half that I've been in the district is the climate and culture piece. You know, everybody knows the difficulties of that teachers are experiencing right now. So whatever we can do to kind of help their day get better or, or, you know, let them know how truly appreciated they are, I think is important. You know, obviously, who doesn't love a treat now and then? But it's also been giving back their time. So if they, you know, we've covered snack times, we've covered recess duties so that they have additional time to handle whatever they need to handle or just to decompress for those 10, 15 minutes. You know, something as little as, you know, every day we send out an email with the absences for the day, the staff absences, just so people know what's being covered. We've added a check-in form to that too. So if they feel like they need to check in with Chad or I, they can send us a Google form and we can, you know, touch base with them throughout that day. It can be academic or personal. And then in that email each day, I just include a positive quote. And I can't tell you how many staff members have said, you know, thank you so much. I needed to see that. Or, you know, thanks for the laugh. So it's just those little things that we, you know, try to bring to them in addition to the 504 coordinator, attending the grade level IP meetings, handling any discipline issues that arise, and family contact, you know, phone, email at the arrival or dismissal point.
And over at Turkey Hill, like Kevin said, you know, I do the 504 coordinating. And some of the things that we've implemented this year with having a full-time assistant principal, Heidi will do the morning announcements and I'll do the afternoon announcements. And one, one of the things we added into that were compliment cards. So if teachers or even kids can fill out a little card and drop it in a little mailbox right outside the office and then I'll get it and read it off at the end of the day. So it might be, you know, Mrs. Dumont's class. You know, like today, actually, Mrs. Dumont's class invited me in for their science project. So I got to go in. So I thanked them with the compliment card and, you know, told them what a wonderful, wonderful time I had and what a great class it was. And we do things like that every day, which is nice, I think, for the, the climate and culture. The other thing that I really enjoy is our weekly faculty newsletter. Try to keep it luddy, you know, and add some humor in when I can. Mrs. Champagne's been, been picked on a few times in that faculty newsletter, but it's, it's been great. Another thing we did this year was streamline the pickup line outside to try to shave some time off. I was challenged early on. The record for getting all the kids out of the building was 323 and I blew that away at 319 a couple of months ago. So I was proud of that. Recess, I don't know if anyone noticed, when I showed that graph, recess discipline was about 12%. Not something we're really proud of because it used to be about a third. So we'd be somewhere around, you know, 33% of the issues were at recess, which makes sense because they're, you know, the kids are playing and they're getting amped up and, you know, things can happen. So I talked to Heidi about this over the summer. I said, well, why don't I just go out at recess as, you know, the assistant principal, but also an extra adult and, you know, be able to supervise and also see the things day-to-day because the teachers are there two days a week. So, you know, what happened, again, what happened one day, it might be a gap for them and they don't kind of see that day-to-day. So I've been out there. I've been invited to play football with the kids. Yesterday I had three touchdown passes. Be cool.
He tried to get me to play too.
Yeah, I did try to get you to play. It's right there. Another thing we got this year was a recess cart. The, our phys ed teacher, Mrs. Fedella, donated some of her older equipment so that we can have, you know, balls, footballs, jump ropes, hula hoops. We even have cones too, to make fields and stuff. Because one of the things we wanted to do with the kids is, you know, when they play recess, we want them to play by the rules. It's one of our PBIS things. So we want to kind of all agree on what the rules are. Where's, what are the field dimensions? What are we playing? You know, that kind of thing. And that's limited the, the number of issues. We also have a PBIS committee made up of our social worker, guidance counselor, me and some of the teachers. And we meet to talk about the discipline data. What are some things we can improve? We're kind of have an eye on next year about, you know, what we want to do and how we want to teach behavior. We, we put together a discipline tracking system this year using Google Drive. And so that's how I was able to make that, those nice graphs for everybody to see tonight. Parent communication, phone log. This is something that, you know, Heidi talked about early on and she impressed upon me to, you know, make sure I logged the calls with parents, right? And we put it on, that's on a drive as well so she can see. If she has a conversation with the parents, she can write it in, quickly, a note. And then if I, you know, need to, to look at that, I can see it too. So we did some continuity there and communication between Heidi and myself and then also with the parents. Another thing I, I do like Kevin is staff attendance, covering absences. It was, I think all the assistant principals will tell you, quite a challenge during the COVID pandemic. And then we talked about student check-ins, which is probably the most fun that I have in my job is just working with the kids.
So ever since the summer when, you know, John officially came on board as full-time assistant principal at Turkey Hill, him and I have worked pretty closely together. Some of the things that we've been able to do is work through the substitute hiring process. Over the summer, we tried our best to get a pool of substitutes for the upcoming school year. You know, unfortunately, we may have done it a little too early in the summer. So by the time school came around and whatever was happening was happening, we didn't have that pool necessarily left over. But we've continued to, you know, still look for qualified candidates. We've interviewed, hired them. We've created a slideshow that has important information for them, you know, what they need to know. We've come up with kind of streamlined substitute holders for both primary and Turkey Hill so that, you know, if we recruit substitutes to be in our buildings, it's a similar process in either one. And then they have that kind of comfort level there. Because Turkey Hill and primary share buses, you know, there are some times when behavior incidents arise that involve a student at each school. So him and I, you know, get on the phone real quick, try to do our best to figure it out, talk to the students and get back to each other, just so we're having a clear picture of what actually happened.
Kevin, we also, you know, we're trading off the video on the buses too, right? Driving back and forth to each other when we have to.
Right, yes. And then just be attending a professional learning network together, you know, being able to have those conversations to kind of digest that information that we were presented. And then working through and figuring out what PBIS practices and expectations are we looking for and what's appropriate, appropriate at each level. But it's been nice to kind of have that partner in crime, so to speak, to bouncing off.
Absolutely.
Just real quick, the schedule this year introduced some common planning time. So at the primary school, the grade levels meet as a team once a week. One is a dedicated block for ELA, one is for math. At Turkey Hill, they are departmentalized. So it's academic teams that meet once a week. So either the ELA team or the math team are meeting once a week. They work with the instructional math and literacy specialists to develop those common experiences for students, as Chad was referring to earlier. The, the specialists really help the teachers to dig into those lessons, look for the important concepts, what do they really need to focus on so that the students are getting that learning? And then sometimes during those time blocks, we have professional development opportunities such as scientific reading workshops, literacy academy, and working with the outside math consultant. So it's really a good use of time to further expand the teacher's knowledge base.
So as Chad had mentioned earlier, we really can't say enough about our behavioral health team, our, our new social workers. It's just been a huge addition. They have caseloads, somewhere around 30 students with, you know, some significant social, emotional needs. And they also work closely with outside resources such as DCF, helping families and students find outside therapists as well. They communicate, you know, with staff, parents, definitely work closely with us. And, you know, they're there for the crisis management piece, which is, which is critical in working, working with our students.
John, I just want to jump in and say that they're, they're also able to jump in and oversee that care solvers process, right? Like really track that down and have the oversight, which is extremely important for, for some of our students and some of our families.
Agreed. And I think, you know, having that, that, you know, case management, right? That's, that's so key for free to get those services. And they, they do an exceptional job. We're really lucky to have at all, all the levels. They're all exceptional.
And, you know, of course, while we highlighted, you know, tons of positives that are happening, we know that there's always areas for improvement. So some target areas, if you will, that we're looking at in the upcoming school year to continue and improve and refine the, continue to improve and refine the PBIS system at both schools, build upon and expand, I would even say, a more consistent and effective tier-one SEL program. Really look at the best practices that we use for our high-need students, both our, you know, academically high-need and behaviorally high-need students. And then really review the discipline practices for fairness and consistency, consistency. And, you know, really look to see how we can include more of a restorative element at this age level.
All right, yes. So, you know, we, we've spoken about it many times. I believe Jamie Miller has had, provided you with a presentation last two weeks or four weeks ago, just around the amount of mental health issues that we've been managing at the middle and high school without our second guidance counselor, John Chulo, and our full-time social worker, Jen
Without our second, uh, guidance counselor, John Chulo, and our full-time social worker, Jen Fletcher, they have been nothing short of brilliant in working as a team with Karma Tuzignat, Lori Shea, and with our, uh, second full-time nurse, which is Elizabeth Schatzup. Uh, they have, um, just done an outstanding job of, of providing quality care uh, for the students that we serve in our building. And, um, I, I, I would be concerned if we were at the level of the guidance counselors that we have been pre-pandemic, also not having a full-time social worker uh, to manage some of the emergency mental health, um, situations that we have had this year. Uh, we would not be in the position we are to provide the quality instruction, uh, that we are doing right now. So I spoke about this, uh, earlier. Our middle school is, it, it, our whole philosophy is around teaming interdisciplinary teams and the effective use of teaming. We continue with that, uh, with working in different teams within the building. Uh, our first faculty meeting of every month is dedicated to child study meetings, which, uh, we break up into grade levels, and we actually have child study leaders uh, that kind of, um, facilitate those meetings. Uh, we, that's where we really begin our tier-one, two, and three processes with identification, providing accommodations, and then deter- and then progress monitoring, then determining if we need, you know, additional resources at the end of that certain time. The behavioral horse, uh, health support team I spoke to earlier and just how powerful that is to be a member of that team at our middle school, um, Karma, John, Lori, and Jen, um, are just an amazing team that meet daily to manage, uh, our students' mental health. We have our leadership team that we met with today, and that's a component of about five leaders, um, for a grade level and special areas, and we meet once a month, and we brainstorm on how we can become better, and we can communicate effectively among our colleagues. And, uh, Annika Scott had added to our, um, after-school tutoring program, which has been very successful. We've also had our National Honor Society students, um, tutoring, uh, our middle school students. And we also have our teacher support team, uh, which is developed, uh, we have student support, but then what, what supports can we provide teachers? Or what strategies and accommodations that they may not have tried in their classroom uh, that might be successful with some students? So that's just a snapshot of some of the very successful teaming that goes on in the middle school.
And I'm gonna, I'm gonna jump in now, so with the past couple of years and the pandemic, and two years ago when we had to close down early, and then we, last year, we changed models uh, quite a few times with the hybrid model, then by the end of the year, we had students coming, um, every single day. We, we figured there was going to be an uptick in discipline, and, and there has been a, a bit of an uptick in discipline this year. Um, one of the areas that's been a bit of a struggle, and we're going to continue to work with students, is around the internet and phone, um, violations and, and just the, the proper usage of, of the phone. Um, I, I think it's, it has to do with a little bit of, of the students, uh, not socializing as well, um, and just having to process and work through them and redirect them. Um, so they, they're not using the phones correctly, which then spills over into school, and it's just stuff we have to address. And I will certainly echo what, what Mr. Santri had said, that because we're such a teaming model in the middle school, it has been so, um, it's been so valuable to bounce ideas off of both guidance counselors, our BCBA, Mary Young, um, you know, our school psychologist, and Jen Fletcher, our social worker. Having those supports, um, especially with the uptick in discipline we have seen, has just been phenomenal. And I've worn many different hats in my, in my service here in Lunenburg. When I first came, I was an eight through 12 assistant principal in the very old building. Then when we moved over in 2016, I was the six through 12 assistant principal when we moved over to the building, uh, with Mr. Santri and Mr. Spatafino. And I will say, thankfully this year, I, um, am just sixth, seventh, and eighth grade because with the uptick, um, in discipline, for me to do more follow-ups, for me to, um, you know, my, my parent phone logs and the constant communication I have to have, um, I, I've been very blessed this year to be able to manage everything that is going on, um, here, um, at the middle school. You can go to the next slide, please, Dr. Burma. This is a little bit of a different graph that shows, um, kind of by grade level. Uh, eighth grade, uh, is in green, seventh grade is in, um, the musty yellow color, and sixth grade is in red. Uh, again, you can see the internet violation, uh, for phone is the one that's kind of leading the pack, and that's been kind of the biggest concern, and just trying to work through that with students.
And, and if you think about it, and I don't mean to interrupt Mr. McGrath, I apologize.
Jump in, Mr. Santri.
To have, uh, the internet phone violations, it, it kind of is logical, considering, you know, for 20 to 22 months, these students, it was their way of socializing when they were locked down in a pandemic, and then we asked them to come back into the building and not use that type of, uh, social media outlet. So we've been really working, and Mr. McGrath has been working at, at teaching and learning and what appropriate times and ways of using social media. Uh, it has been challenging, um, you know, many of the students, uh, know the last time they were in here without masks, our sixth grade was halfway through fourth grade. So if you think about that emotional jump going into middle school, after you, you know, you may have skipped, uh, a fifth grade with face-to-face instruction, uh, it's a difficult task, and please, somebody knock on wood, uh, we are, I believe, turning a corner, and, uh, we're seeing a decrease in some of these behaviors due to our ability to, to manage and follow up with them. So I apologize, Mr. McGrath.
Absolutely not, jump in anytime. Uh, you can go to the next slide. So this is just kind of a breakdown, um, of total incidents. Uh, eighth grade has, there's been quite a few redirections this year with our eighth graders, and sixth and seventh have been kind of tied. Um, you can go to the next slide. So this is a bit of a breakdown of some of, um, some of our bigger incidents we've had to address. Um, we definitely want to use progressive discipline and restorative justice practices, but there are just some incidents that, um, you know, we, we can't have in school. So we, we have had, uh, 28 suspensions, um, this year. Um, the breakdown is, we've had some repeat offenders. Uh, the eighth grade has led in, in, uh, some incidents, but the seventh grade, um, at 47% have had some of the more major incidents that we've had to address. And again, the follow-ups and the re-entry meetings are the most important things when it comes to, you know, bringing a student back after, after a suspension. And because I am only, uh, assigned to the middle school, I am able to do the daily check-ins that I need to do. I am able to see how things are going, um, when they're in the hallways. I am able to do the walkthroughs, I am able to, um, be more proactive than reactive. And I, and I can assure you that, um, if we were in an old model where I was, um, in a six through 12 model, if I was the only assistant principal, um, I do believe those numbers would even be higher, um, if I, if I was in the old model when I was the assistant principal a number of years ago. You can go to the next slide, please. So, you know, some of the, some of the things that we are trying to do, and certainly, um, Dave and Brian, you can jump in here, but, you know, the follow-up and, you know, having the, the, the culture and climate, being able to be visible, be out in the hallways, be in the lunchrooms, do the walkthroughs, you know, those are the things that are really going to help you, and making those personal connections with students. That way, if they are kind of in a crisis situation, asking them to come down to the office, asking them to remove themselves, um, you have to build those relationships first so they trust you. And so, you know, you, you get to know the student, and then they, they get to know you, and when you have that trust level, that's when you can help de-escalate situations. And I can tell you that there are several students who, at the beginning of the year, an incident would have escalated to major, to maybe even a suspension level. I would say over the past two months, there have been multiple situations where we've been able to work with the student to just sort of remove them, de-escalate them, do the check-in, and then get them back in class because I've been able to build that trust and, and work with Ms. Fletcher, Mrs. Tuzignat, Mr. Chulo. Um, so again, those are the things, uh, you know, and as Mr. Santri said earlier, I don't like saying it, but you, you do wear so many hats, and sometimes when you have too many hats on, you don't do anything well. Um, and I am not finding that this year. So I am just so thankful, um, to be able to have the two assistant principals at the high school because it allows me to really focus on the middle school. So Dave or Brian, if you guys want to jump in, you certainly can.
Well, similarly, these are some of our, um, you know, additional staff to Lunenburg High School this year. So, uh, myself, Dave Micu, and, uh, Brian Duffy, now in the assistant principal roles at the high school. Um, we have hired an additional guidance counselor, Megan Gilman. Uh, we have a full-time social worker, Jamie Millet, which I'm sure most of you, uh, have seen here from time to time. Uh, this additional nurse, uh, Vicky Freddy, which was very, um, very needed during, you know, the COVID times and those, those check-ins of kids in and out, you know, and, um, you know, dealt with this as, as, um, you know, quick as possible, but also giving them that care and time. And also we have a new math teacher, uh, Megan Flattery. So similarly to some of the other data, you know, that other, other schools are talking about, um, you know, we tracked the minor classroom infractions, which are filled out by the teachers. Uh, one thing we adjusted this year is going from a paper document to a Google form. So this is just overall, you know, quicker follow-up and, um, makes tracking more efficient. Um, and the focus is identifying the underlying, you know, um, causes of, of these behaviors. So, you know, if you're just, uh, blindly, you know, if a kid does something small and he, you know, automatically gets detention or gets yelled at, and there's no real, um, doc, deep dive into, you know, the reasons why, it's going to be the same behavior over and over again. So we kind of put emphasis on, you know, those quick follow-ups where, you know, a teacher, you know, they, they were actually told earlier, which is a little bit different, so you might have an influx of more discipline referrals, but the, but they're not, they're not automatically, um, disciplined. That makes sense. So, you know, because teachers are, can not fill it out more, um, you know, easily, I, you know, I told them, you know, fill them out, just to track behaviors. So then, you know, we, me, Mr. Duffy, Mr. Santri, you know, the guidance team kind of knows ahead of time, like, if this kid's getting written up for these minor things in several classes, we can kind of, uh, you know, pull them and really have those conversations, like, hey, what's going on? Is there anything good at home? And really try to prevent the major behaviors from going on. Um, and we've seen, you know, a pretty good, um, result from that. You go to the next slide, yeah. So, you know, we have 167 responses, which seems like a lot, but you'll see on, um, next slides, I'll go into the more detail, but, um, so for admin follow-up, right, that's usually a more, like, you gotta say major thing, but, you know, it's more of like the chronic thing, right? It could be, be by plagiarism, it could be, you know, skipping class where, you know, it's not really only a teacher to do that follow-up where admin should get in, but the fact that 49% to almost half of those responses needed no admin follow-up shows that teachers are either having their own interventions with the kids, you know, uh, following up on any behaviors or classroom incidents, and kind of solving it themselves, which is, you know, the goal. They, they build those relationships with those kids, so there's no need for, you know, you know, major discipline. And then, you know, the other half, which I tell them, you know, any, any class skips or, um, you know, more just cut and dry, you know, we, we take care of that, so, you know, it takes up the plate. And then, um, guidance referrals are the ones that, we have a different referral sheet for that, that's why that's a little low. Um, this is the breakdown of each grade, you know, makes sense, and ninth grade's the most. Um, you know, the transition of the year, again, as Mr. Santri was saying, you know, the last time they had a normal school year was sometime seventh grade. Um, so they never really got those, those normal social skills that you would develop through middle school and kind of mature capacity, you know, those ninth grades are really like seventh grades right now. So they're kind of learning those executive functioning skills and just the social skills to get through a day. Um, and, you know, it makes sense, everything else is kind of split equally for the most part. And, uh, Mr. Duffy, feel free to jump in, uh, if you're missing anything, if you want to elaborate more. Um, I put this slide in here, you know, again, a lot of the stuff that we're doing is similar to what, um, you know, other schools have kind of dove deep in. So, you know, one of, one of the major, um, areas that we want to, you know, you know, make sure we have is that family communication outreach and support, you know, emphasis support, right? Because, again, it's not only kids who are struggling, you know, families have had a tough couple of years, so we want to make sure we're supporting, you know, the, the full kid. Um, so a lot of the work that, you know, I've been trying to keep up with, with, which has been a little harder than I expected when I, um, took on the role in, in August, was the, um, keeping track of the tardiness and, uh, chronic, uh, attendance issues. So basically, you know, again, I, I, I track this on a Google form, so I can, I keep track of it all in my, uh, communication, but I've tried to set up, you know, by our handbook, like, three tardies, automatic detention, kind of go down that. I always reach out to the families first when they're getting, you know, two or three tardies, and kind of, and, you know, you're surprised by half the time, family has, like, a, a reason why, right? And that, again, that's always like finding the, the why, where I'm not going to give a kid detention if, you know, there's, there's mental health issues at home, if there's, um, something going on which is causing them to be a little late. So we kind of fill in those reasons why, and I can work with that kid and be like, hey, you know, I know you're going through a tough time, make sure, um, you know, you reach out to us if you're going to be late one day, and, you know, just let us know if you need anything. And we've seen, you know, a much less, um, discipline from that, right? You do, you have some kids who, you know, stop to, you know, get in here on time, but for the most part, after those warning emails go out, or maybe they get that one after-school detention, you know, we don't see a lot of repeaters, which is, which is the, the goal, to kind of, again, just keep everyone in the loop. Because some parents even say, oh, I didn't know he's been late, you know, two or three times already, and they kind of put him up at home and make sure they get into school on time. Um, again, that, that team aspect where any of this outreach, if we do, if there are any concerns, you know, we get the admin together, the guidance, the nurses, um, secretaries usually know a lot when, you know, the parents are calling in, um, so we just kind of all work together to make sure we're, um, developing the right supports for these kids. Um, also, you know, emphasis on positive messages. I know a lot of times, you know, it's sort of AP roles, like the discipline roles, so you're always reaching out for issues. So it's always the parent getting the same emails or calls over and over again. So, you know, if you have a kid you're working with and they're having a great week, you know, try to get a phone call or some sort of message home to say, like, hey, you know, Bobby's doing great this week, I've really seen, you know, his, um, his effort in class, or, you know, his, his respectfulness is really increasing, and the parents get very, you know, they get a little, uh, a little jacked up from that, which is good. Um, then also, you know, the in-depth work conflict resolution, so kind of like what Mr. McGrath was saying, um, you know, the phone, social media stuff is the hardest thing to fix, and it's the most prevalent thing right now, so a lot of one-on-one conversations, um, trying to, um, you know, teach kids, again, not to take social media as like a lifeline, make sure they're posting things that are, you know, appropriate, uh, just those social skills. Social skills, which I think are a little lacking for being remote or, you know, even hybrid, they're not really seeing all these kids all the time, um, so their life is kind of online. So just putting that perspective and, and keeping the families in contact to make sure they understand what's going on too, because, um, you know, there's always one-sided stories, you start putting it together. So that constant communication's really helped, um, just the, the climate in general in the school. Um, and then also we have the weekly emails Mr. Santri sends out with, you know, sports updates, anything on the, uh, behavioral health, uh, outreach, and really anything else, which I think is great. Um, and it's very in-depth and a lot of links help up in, so. Mr. Duffy, I don't know, yeah, if you want to jump in.
Yeah, thanks so much, Dave. Um, you know, one thing I want to say before we get into this slide is, I don't think there's a better school leader in New England than Dave Micu when it comes to tardy vigilance. Um, I've seen many people make attempts at it, and, uh, he could, he could put on a tutorial in terms of how to do it the right way, so kudos to Dave for that.
And he's doing it during a time when, when we're asking students to stay home if they're sick, and we're trying to figure out the tardy and attendance fee, so, Dave, absolutely, great job working with that.
The other thing I want to say, um, and again, Brian Duffy, I'm new this year, thrilled to be in Lunenburg, at Lunenburg High School, it's a tremendous place. And before we get into these, um, couple of, um, bullet points, just kind of capturing all that Dave just talked about, um, what's, what's so special, I think, about our school is that I think it'd be hard-pressed to identify a student who is struggling in any capacity, in any way, that we aren't really dialed into. we aren't really dialed into, and we're not having frequent collaborative conversations to support. Some students at our school are struggling, whether it be social, emotionally, behaviorally, academically. But we, we want you to know that, that, if that is the case, we are very aware of that, and we are collaborating with teachers, with guidance, social, emotional support staff, families. And we're, you know, we're really making a, a real concerted effort to make sure that we're exhausting all options to find success for all of our students. So I think one of the, one of the big things that we're trying to, you know, bring to our school community is just this idea of having a growth mindset, that we can all get better in all areas, that learning is a growth experience, and that students who perhaps may, for example, struggle in mathematics, they can get better in mathematics. You know, if, if, if one of us is struggling in a particular area, we know we can, we can get better in those areas. So we as school leaders, trying to model the idea that, that growth is, is part of the process, and that we're not fixed. There's not a place at which we say, okay, we're resting here, that we can get better as learners, as thinkers, as citizens. And I think trying to model that is, is key. Flexibility and adaptability, like everyone on here has said, you know, my son is only in second grade, but, you know, he just now is taking a mask off for the first time. And so, the, the experience that our students have had over the last two years is something that we really can't even conceive of. We've been here as educators, but we're not the learners. And so, we know that the crucial, how crucial it is to be ever more flexible and adaptable to students who have gone through so much. They've had interrupted education. The best of our students have had an interrupted education. So we, we know that we can't, we can't really come at this, this educational experience in the, in the precise same way that we did before this pandemic, because our students are in a different place. Mr. Santri, you want to take over from here?
I think that we've done a great job with, it touches upon that piece of management with the emotional and physical state safety for all of our students. And I think Mr. Duffy said it best is, is I think that what we're really proud of is that, yes, we, we do have students that struggle. But I think in this year, more than in past years, is that we have been able to track all students that are struggling and trying to have a safety net for each and every one of those students. And a lot of that is that work that we're doing in those small groups, the behavioral health groups, the student success team groups, and having individual conversations with students in our, in our offices and having the time to do that. I think it, it's, it's wonderful. And like I said earlier, since the beginning of August, that we've, we've been trying to create a culture that is supportive and student-centered and engaging for all. And we've really just been able to continue to work at that. And I, I know as next steps that we'll continue to do that. We have a fantastic faculty. We have a fantastic administration that complements each other, and that we have, each have our own strengths that, that we're aware of and that we depend on. I mean, you know, Mr. Maiku's technology skills and attendance piece, and Mr. Duffy's thoughtfulness and, and process and meeting with teachers, and Mr. McGrath's experience and know-how in, in managing a building. It, it just seems like it's all coming together. I just really look forward to what, what our building looks like as we take these next steps, hopefully, post-pandemic. Just love how that sounds. But I think that's it for our presentation. I appreciate your sticking with us. It was a lot of information, but we wanted to get a lot of information out to you. It was, it's important because, you know, in the past, we have done this with a skeleton crew. And although we were able to keep our heads above water, we were never able really to push forward. And I can speak from that, from experience of having to do several different jobs, or, or, you know, filling in when we didn't have other administrators in the building to bounce ideas off of. And I think what it really comes down to is student success. So, I promise I'll stop talking. So if anyone else has any questions, I'd be glad to answer them, for all of us.
Thank you. Thank you all of you for all that you do for our students. That was extremely thorough, and we got a good picture of what happens during your days. Is there anyone that has a question for anyone on the team here?
I don't have a question. Thank you all. I mean, I don't even know where you found the time to put the presentation together because of all the work that you're doing.
Teamwork.
Yes, you guys are wonderful.
Thank you.
And I would just offer that, you know, at one point during this presentation, they referenced the, the power and the impact of having an opportunity for, for dialogue through the evaluation process, and how that's so much more meaningful than looking at a document as an artifact, right? And I hope that you are feeling this year thus far, having had several consecutive meetings now with presentations that go into detail about the work that's being done by so many people in the district. And you can get a sense of the power and the impact of the positions that we've hired, right? But you also hopefully have had an opportunity to hear directly from the people who do the work, and see the passion, and see the care and the thoughtfulness, and hear from them directly about their experiences, and their assessment of, of the things that are working well, and the things that we're learning, that we need to focus more attention on, and maybe shift practice around to get an even better outcome. I'm hopeful that this year's process for all of you, as you have to go through the process of evaluating me, that these meetings and these presentations have been much more impactful and meaningful than, than any set of documents I could compile for you. And I know that we, right, team, we compile an awful lot of documents to, to provide evidence of the work that we do. But I, I think this is much more impactful testimony for you to hear, and have the opportunity to ask them questions. And quite frankly, for you to get an opportunity to, to get to know the staff that really is digging in and doing this work, from our social work folks, our academic folks. And there will be more presentations over the next couple of meetings as well, so that you can get even more insight into some, some key areas. So hopefully, these meetings and these presentations have been beneficial to all of you as well. But they're a fantastic team. Thank you all so much for, for being here tonight. I think actually, they were prepared to be here physically present this evening. But I think actually, this turned out to be better because we don't have a good audio setup when you have this many folks tag-teaming in a presentation. But just know that they were all prepared and ready to be here physically this evening. But I, I do think that this worked out really well. And I thank you all for, for the teamwork, not only in the presentation, the, the verbal presentation, but the work that, that goes into compiling the slides that walk us through all the points that we want to make sure we talk about. So thank you all very much. We're going to move along with the agenda, and we're going to transition to school committee reports now. So you all can sign off and enjoy the rest of your evening with your families. Thank you so much.
Good night.
We thank you very much. Thank you. Next, we have a public comment open to anything that falls under the scope of authority of the school committee. I don't know if we have any public comments. Mr. Leighton?
I do. It's been an interesting past almost three years. And I feel like the election season is coming up with the, the town caucus coming up in a week from Monday. So I've enjoyed my time on the committee, and I've talked it over with my family, and I've decided that I will be seeking reelection in May. I feel like I can use my experience as a teacher, and as a parent, and as an educator, and a, and a coach as well, to continue serving the community. I also encourage others to also find that area that you want to serve your community, and, and run for something as well.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Well, I will echo Mr. Leighton's comment then, and say that at the town caucus, I will also put my name in for reelection. I've enjoyed my three years here. It's been a bit of, or four years, actually. It's been a bit of a challenge now and again. But I've enjoyed doing it. And I think I've learned a lot. And I like to continue serving the people, and particularly the children of Lunenburg. One other comment, public comment, that I promised I would make, is that in two weeks, we are meeting again. But also, there will be a public meeting here at the town hall, running concurrently with our school committee meeting, dealing with Marshall Park. And anyone who has comments on the Marshall Park preliminary plans, there is a meeting that will discuss those further. And they've put those two options together into one, I believe. And that will happen concurrently with our meeting. If we are very quick, we might be able to switch over because our next meeting is also, is a Zoom meeting. So we might be able to join the Marshall Park discussion as well. So if there are no other comments, then we need to start with the Athletic Advisory Council report.
Yes, we met on Monday. We did have one fundraiser, booster fundraiser request from La Crosse. They're going to be doing a calendar, which was approved. We didn't have any others. So we did plan to meet on April 4th as well, see if there's any other spring sports that want to do any fundraiser approvals for boosters. And then we're going to, again, meet June 6th as well, prior to the, the summer. So any fall sports that want to get a head start, they can do that. We also, there was also discussion about a unified booster. So we had, we had talked about it in years past too. So there was discussion on that. We're going to put that on the future agenda to discuss the pros and cons of a unified one booster. There was also an update on the Snack Shack. Some of the boosters have been working together, reaching out to Nadine and the school, and the school and the board of health to try to figure out what would be needed to get the Snack Shack more up-to-date so that they could do more hot foods, and just have more access to, to more opportunities using the Snack Shack. And that was it.
All right. Thank you very much. The finance committee met on February 24th. They discussed the budget request from the Council on Aging Senior Center, the library and land use. There is a plan that if the budget goes through, to open the library on Fridays. Next, their next meeting is tomorrow evening at town hall at 7:00 PM. The fire and police departments will be discussing their budgets. The PTO has not met since our last meeting. And school councils, then?
The primary hasn't met.
And the elementary school?
We met on the 17th of February. MCAS is set for the spring. March 29th and 31st is ELA for third grade, the 30th and April 1st for fourth grade, 5th, April 5th and April 7th for fifth grade. And then math is going to be the 10th and 12th of May for third grade, May 3rd and May 5th for fourth grade, and May 4th and May 6th for fifth grade, and May 17th and May 19th for fifth grade science. Turkey Hill had a very successful spelling bee. I know Sean had talked about that earlier. So congratulations to Chloe McKenna. And as Mr. Palumbo just spoke about, at that presentation, there's been a 39% decrease from the 2019, 2020 school year to this school year regarding discipline referrals. And that's due to additional staff, as he just spoke about. We also hired a new behavioral health counselor, Enes Ward. So welcome to Enes. I believe there's going to be servicing grades one through four for now, and eventually fifth.
Thank you very much. And the middle school?
Has not met.
And the high school?
It's me again. I covered on the 17th of February. Lots of great things going on up there. I was very impressed with this meeting because I usually only focus on the primary school or the Turkey Hill. So it's really great to see what my kids are going into. Just so impressed with the staff in that school. We spoke about finalizing the 22, 23 calendar. They're looking to possibly return to having a calendar committee to focus solely on what dates make sense, and potentially thinking of moving parent-teacher conferences to the spring so that teachers can get a better sense of the students and have a more robust report for parents. Warren Stevenson gave some fantastic curriculum updates, so many good things going on in every department. MCAS dates for the high school, ELA session one on March 22nd and session two on March 23rd. Math will be session one on May 17th and session two on May 18th, and bio and intro to physics on June 7th and June 8th. And Mr. Santri is also going to be creating a LHS handbook committee to go forward.
Okay, thank you very much. And now, capital planning?
We have not met.
And the wellness advisory committee?
Our meeting's February 8th meeting. So we had a mental health update from Jamie Millet. We're using SNAP since October for documentation of social worker and guidance visits. And the mental health office is seeing an increase in business and anxiety, depression, and COVID fatigue. We had a food service update from Nadine Lorenzen. There are new cafeteria managers at Lunenburg Middle High School and the elementary school. Free produce lunch numbers increased from 20% to 26%. Increased participation in breakfast and lunch were up to 54%. USDA standards are changing. A new bridge rule has been put in place to ease into the new standards. And there's still distribution problems due to supply chain issues. We had a presentation from Sue Diamondopoulos about Escape the Bait, which is an interactive program to help teach students about the dangers of vaping. So Roar is going to be talking with Nicole Therrien to hopefully bring this program to the middle school. We have some proposed changes to the handbook. I know I've mentioned previously how we've talked about changing the policy regarding food in the classroom. The committee members were provided with information from other districts pertaining to classroom celebrations. And information showed that most districts either place restrictions on food items or have a ban on food celebrations. So the committee reviewed the current school handbook statements about food in the classrooms. And there was a discussion about compliance with USDA guides for food offered within the school. And because of life-threatening allergies due to medical concerns and cultural sensitivity, the committee drafted a statement that will be used in all school handbooks, which will be going to the school advisory councils very soon. And that was all we had. And our next meeting is March 8th.
Thank you very much. And PACSEL?
We are meeting on March 10th. And that is the meeting that the Special Education Parent Advisory Council, supporting all learners in collaboration with the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, is going to be hosting this parent orientation to learn about the upcoming special education and civil rights review in the district. So that's going to be held or resume at 6:00 PM. And there is more information on the PACSEL website.
Thank you. And the Lunenburg Municipal Building Design Committee?
So we have not met since our last meeting, and will be meeting on Monday, the 7th.
Okay. And lifelong learning?
I will offer this update. We are not actively pursuing the expansion of any of our programmings. But with the mask mandate being lifted, we are going to resume use of the fitness room at the high school for the community. And that will be getting underway soon. And I believe we also have some interests for the basketball, the adult basketball, sort of like a pickup game. So there are some things that had been in place prior that now with the mask mandate being dropped, folks are engaging in that again. But still, as reported the last time, we're not pursuing any expansion of, of programs at this time.
Thank you. Policy subcommittee?
We have not met.
MASC workshop report?
I didn't see any new...
There's one coming up on Friday.
There's one Friday.
There's one Friday.
Yeah. But that was one we had discussed earlier, I think. It was the, the learning lunch series with the superintendent evaluation.
Yes. And that would be it. So now we have topics for future discussions. We have engaging parents on here already. I did have a communication from the folks that presented to us before about the insecticide bill, and they had some new information they wanted to bring to us. So, we need to schedule that in. And we also need to schedule, we had talked about a workshop dealing with superintendent's evaluation. And I said that I would attend the learning lunch, and anybody else who wants to, to catch what I don't catch, is welcome to do that. And then we will do the workshop meeting ourselves, rather than have a consultant come in. But we need to schedule that. I'd like to schedule that in March sometime, so that we are not doing the evaluation the week of the town election, and that becomes difficult because if some of us are not here, then that creates a problem. So, maybe what I'll do is draft a couple of possible dates and send them around.
Okay.
And see if people are available on those dates. Okay.
And then the next meeting, we'll also potentially have an action item, so the update on the CDC guidance as well?
Yes, yes. We're gonna look at all of the mitigation strategies and see what can be worked on. And as well as the next meeting is a public hearing for the budget.
Correct.
That should be enough.
All right.
Okay, well, that's all I have, and unless anybody else has something?
I'll make a motion to adjourn at 8:32 PM.
I'll second that.
And a roll call vote, please. Ms. Shapiro?
Yes.
Mr. Scumbrini?
Yes.
Mrs. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Leighton?
Yes.
And Mrs. Arshamo?
Yes.
Thank you all. Thank you, have a good evening.
Hi, everyone.
Bye, Sophie.